Is, sorry, it is five thirty, so we will start the city council study session meeting. All right, going to go down to agenda item number two is public comment period. Seeing no one in the audience, I will move on. Roundtable discussion amongst council members. Who would like to start us off, Will?
I thought the, well, first off, yeah, the party on Friday, I thought that was great. Ryan did fantastic with the potato bar and just a real nice, real nice atmosphere. It seemed like everyone enjoyed it. I appreciate the invite, very nice.
Okay, all right, we're going on to Patrick.
I saw a recently about an hour ago, a promotion for the ball drop on one oh three point three on their website, so it's pretty cool, it's exciting to see.
Nothing, all right, I think we're all like eating too many Christmas cookies already. Carl?
Yeah, I'm good for today.
All right, Melanie?
I don't have anything either, thank you.
And nothing for me to discuss, Mary?
Oh my goodness, well, I don't have anything.
You have a list?
I do not have a list today in my blue book at all, so, all right, I'm going to move down to agenda item, item number four, which is review of the amended city council rules of procedure.
All right, I will go ahead and get this going and Michaela can jump in as she sees fit. So, in addition to the ethics ordinance that we guys, we had you guys sign at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, there are also, there also are a rules of procedures that kind of dictate and guide how the council should conduct business. I asked Michaela to go ahead and take a stab at updating this document to kind of give you some recommendations on where we think some changes should be made. They're minor changes, I do want to highlight one of them, you're quick to excuse members' absences, we're, we are rewarding that, where the council may choose to excuse the absence of a council member, if a motion to excuse is not made, the absent council member will be marked as an unexcused before, it's more like it was automatic excuse if they weren't here, so if we have a council member that decides to go AWOL and not tell anyone and just disappear for a month, you should be able to have that conversation about what happens. We also are changing the way we are appointing people to boards, we really weren't following the practice that was in here, it was brought to our attention, and brought to our attention, I mean, Michaela and I noticed it, it was like someone brought it to our, hey, you weren't doing this, so it's something we caught. Typically, if there's a vacancy on a board, we kind of just reach out to people and then we present them to council. The way the process was, it was like the mayor and the mayor pro tem and another member of council was going to interview people, and that was really arduous and the people didn't want to have those interviews, so we make, we just thought we streamlined it a little bit this way. Is there anything else in there, Michaela, that popped out to you?
Not really, I would say that nine out of ten changes that you see in there are just, they were made to reflect the way that we currently operate, so nothing really deviating from how we operate, just making sure that our policy and procedures reflect the way that we do business.
One other point I want to point out, just so you see it in here, it's clear, under calling for the vote, any council member's lack of response, either by voice vote or otherwise, shall be recorded in the minutes of the meeting as a vote in favor of the motion. Occasionally, not all of you are vocal when we call for eyes, or Michaela doesn't pick up everyone that says eye, so if we don't hear you, we put that down as a vote in the yes, because we think we will hear you, if you say no, that would cause for no, so we wanted to be clear on that. Our goal is to bring this to your first meeting in January for you to adopt these, so you have some time to go through this, do you have any questions that you might have seen in these updated or recommended changes to the rules of procedure?
In, in the rules, did I see that it said we would get our packets or something Thursday, Friday?
Saturday or Sunday?
Or Sunday.
Correct.
Yes, I did insert Thursday on there because that is our practice, is typically sending out the packet to you guys on Thursdays, and it has been since I've been here, but, you know, kind of going back to what I said, we wanted to make sure that these rules and procedures kind of reflect the way that we do operate, and before we went in and made those changes, it said that the packet would get to you Thurs, or on Friday, Saturday or Sunday, so I did add Thursday in there to reflect our practices.
Prior to Michaela showing up as a previous council member, that was adamant that we start getting the packet to council on Thursday, and so that's what we're doing, and that's what we're going to endeavor to do from now on, but just in case we hit a roadblock or we're waiting for pertinent information that just has not come in yet, we do want to hold the right to hold off on that packet and not have it go out, you know, until we have all the information you need, but I don't think we've had that issue in the two and a half years you've been here, right, Michaela?
There have been a couple of times we've sent out a packet on Friday morning, but not very often, more often than not, it's on Thursdays.
I just think Sunday is really late for working on Monday, and then we come right here to council, there, there's no time to really dig into it.
Yeah, and that's fine, if council wants to remove that Sunday, just say Thursday, Friday or Saturday, we're fine with that.
Okay.
Well, my, I guess I have a question that if something happens and we, we all get it Saturday evening, we get it Sunday, and there's just not enough time, what, what's a procedure, what's normal procedure if, if, if there's something pertinent that we really need to study and vote on on Monday, would we then say, hey, can we take that off the agenda and we need to do it the next meeting?
Yeah, if the majority of council feels that way. I would tell you, my, my past practice, the majority of council has always been able to digest information, you know, within a couple hours and, you know, feel comfortable making a recommendation, but if the majority of council says, hey, we're not comfortable voting on this tonight, there's no harm, no foul, the only time you'll run into an issue there is like last year when we had to make a decision quickly on the marijuana temporary events, because they were applying for a state license, and there was a, a timeframe with the state license, and council had to act that night, and, you know, there was three council members that were not comfortable acting that night on it, and it failed three to three, so more than likely, it's not going to be any major issue, if it's an issue that you do need a lot of time to digest, you probably have already seen it for the past month, you've had that conversation coming up.
Could the practice be, and I'm just saying this, and I don't want it in the rules, but if the, the packet's going to be delayed from the normal Thursday, Friday morning, an email or would be sent out to council saying, hey, we ran into a roadblock?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then my past practice, I, I've done it a couple of times here, we did it a handful of times in my previous town I served, if the whole packet is waiting on one piece of information, you're going to get the whole packet, and that piece of information is going to have what's called a placeholder report, similar to the discussion today on one oh one Brady, I said in the report, the developers still reviewing our recommended amendments and we haven't got their things back to us, so you'll get a placeholder report, that packet more than likely will always go out on a Thursday, you know, we're not really going to hold it up, where we're going to run into an issue is if it's Thursday and something happens where both Michaela and I are both ill that day, and we just can't come into work, then just say, oh, son of a gun, we're going to work from home as we're not feeling well to get it, try to still get it out, but it'll probably be a Friday when it gets out.
And my attempt to address that is in, if you go to section two E, that addresses agenda and meeting packet, I added that line where it says, when needed, the city manager or city clerk will send the city council supplemental reports at their city email and/or provide a hard copy at the meeting, so.
And I have one more question.
Sure.
And I don't, when I've seen this before, I don't remember if, it says designate, are there certain designees that we've talked about that these are, is it, could it be any city staff? Okay.
And that, that's why we use the word designate, we try not to identify a certain person, the example I gave, if, if I'm gone, if Michaela's gone, and we're like, we need Parker to handle it, we don't want to list every single city employee in here, it's whoever the clerk designates or I designate to say, hey, go get this done, kind of a thing.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we talked about that, that it was understood, it could be any city staff.
Because I think we made that change somewhere else.
It's, yeah, I, I think Michaela, you're probably just making it the same throughout the whole document, yep. Is there any other questions that need?
Are you, I would encourage this council to read section C, the public participation. We had an issue last year with a member of the public who exercised their freedom of speech to a level that was very uncomfortable with a lot of the council members, not all of the council members, but the majority of them, and so we worked with our city attorney to update that last year to be a little more tight on what's appropriate at, from the podium and what's not appropriate, so. And that really takes, unfortunately during public comment, those comments are directed towards the mayor, and it's the mayor's job to ring in, you know, those comments if they step over the line, it's not the city manager's job. I'll do it if you guys direct me to be the one, but it's really, you know, council, they are addressing you as your constituent.
You don't want to be bull?
I can be that person, you know, you know I can be that person.
I know that.
But it's really the council's job to respond to their constituents. It helps keep, it keeps me in line.
Any other questions or discussion, all right, moving down to agenda item number five is review of the local purchasing policy.
So I've talked to a couple council members in this room about what if, would the city be interested in doing a local purchasing policy, and my bookmarking isn't working for me, here we go. So we have a purchasing policy that directs how we purchase goods, you know, for the city of Alligan, you know, if it's below a thousand dollars, we get an estimate or two if we need to, to make sure we're comparable costs, between one and five, we get two to three estimates, the department heads can do it, up to ten, the city manager gets to approve them, above ten, we go out for bed, kind of a thing. We don't have anything in our ordinance that promotes or encourages city staff to purchase from locally owned businesses, and so if we go off the main responsibility of the city staff when doing purchases, which is to be, you know, fiscally responsible, usually find the cheapest good at that price, however, if we do that all the time, I have a feeling that we will miss out on purchasing from local businesses. So, I shared a couple examples of other cities, I reached out to the listserv real quick, did it the day I was typing this report, and I got two responses right away from other city managers who had time the other day to respond to me, to share how they do it. Harbor Springs, which is up in north of Petoskey, so that's Charlestown County, if you purchase within the city limits, and the lower, and the local one is no more than 10% of the lowest quote, you can go with them, if you purchase within Emmett, I said Charlestown County, I apologize, Emmett County, and it's no more than 5% than those quote, you can go with them, and then the city of Muskegon, there's a little more convoluted, they have 2%, but then they have a difference bid of point five considered for those that are qualified in the city limits, which are not for profit and provide social services to the city. I'm just trying to get a feel from the whole council, A, do you want us to come up with a policy that encourages purchasing from local businesses, and then B, what's your definition of local business? And I'm going to tell you a story, in my previous town I was in, I was not part of the project, they built a new police department and joint courthouse, there was two beds that came in that met all the qualifications, one was a Holland company, one was a Westside Grand Rapids company, the Westside, West Grand Rapids was like 20% below the Holland company or something like that, it was significant, and the finance director's eyes there, West Michigan's local, and so, we're going to go with the West Michigan, you know, the, the low one that's just on the west side of, you know, Grand Rapids, 20 miles from us, actually employed city residents, worked for that company, so, however, the local Holland company that was in the city limits used the great argument of, we pay taxes, our workers sit on your boards, kind of an argument, so it kind of goes both ways on a, we have to be fiscally responsible, we don't want to bankrupt the city by, you know, always supporting a certain company that just has high-priced products, but at the same time, we want to support, you know, our neighbors, so I need council to kind of have a conversation amongst yourself here tonight to give direction, is this something you really want staff to dig, to rope our sleeves and dive into and come back with a good policy, is this something you're not too concerned about? And if you do want to rope our sleeves, what's your definition of local?
I'm all for it, I like the, I like the designation of city and then county, and I don't, I don't know any other, well, in your example, Joe, was that construction company in Kent County or were they Ottawa County?
They were Kent.
Okay.
Yeah, just outside Ottawa.
I think, well, the difference in affluence between Muskegon and then Emmett County is pretty large, so that could be maybe why Emmett County went a larger gap, maybe, and that might be okay with them, but, so we might want to be somewhere in the middle, but I'm, I'm all for it either way.
I, when I was looking through that, I had some ideas, both of them have good ideas, Muskegon has a definite advantage because they have much, many, many, many more resources than what Emmett County would have, so therefore theirs would be different, we have to look at what our resources are, I think we go more towards Emmett County thing, but that's something that, you know, the staff will look over, but I'm for it also, I just, I think it's a, it's something that we need to have as a policy for that, we ran into it one time last week, because I remember one of the council members, or not last week, last year, mentioning something about, I thought we always got from local, well, we don't, and we didn't have a policy for that, so, I think it's advisable.
Yeah, I did a little research and basically, from what I've read, like, money spent local is two to three times more likely to keep circulating within the local, which is very good for the economy, and I like the idea of a stepped, like, city then county, yeah, I think it's, it's good, especially if we're talking about, you know, less expensive stuff, obviously the bigger stuff, you bid and go with what's right, but small stuff, under a thousand for sure.
Melanie, did you, I just, I had, I felt like the Muskegon at 1% was a little too low, but I thought 10% was high, so I had written down 2.5 for county, 5% for city, but I think, yeah, city and county should be designated, maybe somewhere in the middle, I know like a lot of our businesses definitely have struggled with all the construction, so it's also good for us to give back and support them, and we have some amazing businesses around here, so, yeah, that's.
Another thing though, we need to not just look at the dollar signs, but there's something you buy that you get local support, or that you can have today is more advantageous, something you got to wait three weeks to get, and if you can't figure out how to work it, you don't have any options, so, you need to keep all that kind of thing in mind too, that's what makes local better.
Adding with Carl, I think there's a level of support you get as well, if you stay in the community, if you have a problem, troubleshoot, and I like the idea of staying under a thousand, like if you need HDMI cable, you can get one today instead of going somewhere else or ordering it, so there's advantages there.
Thank you, anything else, anyone?
I, I think it should stay in the city if it can, under a thousand.
Seems to be an agreement amongst everybody, if you had a policy today, would that have changed recent purchases?
Possibly, we order a lot of things off Amazon, and I'm going to, you know, we're going to bring a policy back for you that it's the intent of city council that, you know, we purchase locally first, something like that, and then if we get compared to bids, that we have to, you know, we click it, we click in whether it's, you know, two and a half and five, or seven and three, or whatever the numbers are between Alligan City and Alligan County, so, yeah, I would say possibly Mayor Perrigo, but off the top of my head, I do not know.
Okay, yeah, because the last thing I want to do is to hold up any progress or, you know, purchases that you need to do with a policy, so, okay.
Yeah, thank you, any other direction you want to give staff on this one? Sorry, Mayor, taking over.
If there was like a large project that you're quoting out, was it possible to have some kind of like, if there's like a taxable amount that they would pay in taxes to consider that as far as percentage goes?
So in that area, I think, when we bid projects out, the applicant, the contractors, is what I'll call them, they're from all over West Michigan, that, or even Michigan that bid on those, we don't have any contractors inside the city limits that, you know, own property that they would pay taxes on, I mean, that they pay property tax on, you know, in the state of Michigan, you only pay taxes on property, even personal property has been a few hundred eighty thousand dollars in personal property, you don't get taxed on that anymore, so, we can look into that, Patrick, but off the top of my head, I don't think there's a significant one, I would tell you, when we look at Alligan County for purchasing like our greenery's that we did this year, we hit two or three different nurseries, so we, we try to spread the love per se, you know, as best as we can on some of that stuff, try to give them all a little bit, you know, have some buy-in into our downtown. But the big projects we got coming up next would be the Mayhem Park Improvement Project and Hubbard Street or the parking lot behind Regent Theater, those are all going to be opened January eighth, something like that, first or second week in January, so those will be our next big ones that come in, I would be shocked if Millbacher doesn't, you know, bid on those since they are, they did our downtown streetscape, they did the roundabout, it's kind of in the wheelhouse, they're not a city, you know, business, they're a township business, but they are Alligan County, so.
One of the things that concerns me is the amount of money, if you did 5%, that's fifty thousand dollars on a million bucks, that fifty thousand dollars can be used for a lot of different things.
Yep.
So there's a, can it be qualified for cost-wise?
Yeah, so, when you, if I'm hearing you correctly, if we do an automatic 5%, you know, in your county, and, you know, one comes in at a million, the other one comes you know, in your county, and, you know, one comes in at a million, the other one comes in at a million fifty thousand, you know, that, that fifty thousand could go a long way to other projects in the city.
Yep.
That can go to, you know.
Fixing the cemetery.
Yes. So, I, 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 that's why the policy I would recommend probably is, would be more of a may than a shall. So, it's really a conversation the council can have at that time. Or maybe we put a sliding scale on it, you know? Would you get above a certain investment, then it's less of a percentage breakdown?
What drove this? I mean, we've never had any, I mean, not saying that we shouldn't have this, but what is driving this to come before council?
Me seeing some Amazon purchases for some products that I'm like, we could buy them elsewhere.
So, should we look at more of a local purchasing, purchasing policy for things that are below X dollar? So, like, I've heard like a thousand dollars, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, if that's what we're looking at more here than the big capital projects? I mean, I, the big capital projects kinda, I, I'm not comfortable with that with a local purchasing policy. I just think this is for the, we need to get it now, we don't wanna wait the two days, you know? Like, that's been mentioned, and we know that we can get it local.
So, uh, it was preparing for the employee appreciation dinner. So, you, you put aside a certain amount of money for city, for the city to use to give gifts to our employees at the end of the year as a way of appreciation. It's in our personnel policy handbook. There was the initial, let's just all order Amazon gift cards, period. And then a certain person in our office said, whoa, wait a second. Let's, uh, support some downtown businesses. And then I said, okay, well, if we're gonna do this, let's just pick the restaurants in the downtown because not everyone's gonna shop at, you know, pick your store. We don't really have like a downtown Alligan buck system or something like that. And so, that's what really clicked it. And then the following week, I was like, I just looked into some stuff. And I said, you know, I think we can be a little more supportive of our downtown and our local businesses in the city of Alligan than just going to Amazon, even though it's so easy to just hop online and click, click, enter. It literally is here the next day. And most projects we don't need, we're, we need something like that minute. It's usually, we need it within a week. So.
Yeah, I think I'd be more comfortable, at least for me, of seeing something of a policy that is, you know, for purchases that are below, I don't know, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars of, that would fit the bill for a local purchasing policy. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would maybe move it, like, to ten thousand, so it's not the big thing, yeah. But I mean, like, if we're gonna buy computers or something like that, it might be ten thousand, unless you're doing a per, per, like, per object.
No, we can't do that. That's a violation of our purchasing ordinance.
Right, yeah.
If I do that, please smack my hand really hard. We can look at that. We're gonna come back with some policy for you to discuss some more. This isn't gonna be an answer tonight or, you know, even at the next meeting. I just needed to get, you know, check your temperature on this to make sure this is a direction you want us to go into.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? No? All right, let's move down to agenda item number six, discussion regarding technology needs of the city council.
All right. So, in your packet, I talked about how when we moved into city hall in 2019, a goal of moving into here was to become just a little more savvy when it comes to technology, specifically in our presentation skills. So, I think we did a pretty good job with this room. In hindsight, though, everyone that sits at this DS has to turn around and look at a screen when we're presenting something. So, I had Ryan do some research, and for around a thousand dollars, we can order individual monitors that connect to our system. So, the screens you're seeing behind you will also be in a monitor in front of you. And the monitor, we hid below the level of this wall here, so. This is something that I am fond of when we are discussing things on this, you know, in the PowerPoint and like, in the top right-hand corner, and everyone does a yank of the head. And then when we have a bigger audience than we do tonight, everyone.
They think you're staring at them.
Yeah, they're like, what's going on here? So, I think, just, I just think for decorum and the way a city council should look, I'm in favor of moving forward with something like this. But I wanna, you know, again, check the temperature with this council. You know, do you think that's overkill? Are you in favor of doing something like that? The, most recently, we've moved the planning commission, the public spaces, and the DDA over into those corners, only to get their eyes closer to that screen. That was the main reason we did that pickup and move over there, because they spend a lot of time looking at plans. We also told them it's be a little more informal, but the main goal was, they're all turning to try and get up and point. But now, they could come back here when we have big meetings and be able to actually see the actual monitors close up.
I, I like the idea. Say, is it just monitors so we can just read them, or would they be like interactive, like?
They would just be monitors so you can read them. They'll be duplicative screens is what we're thinking. We can look at something, I mean, I don't even know how interaction would work.
I need a fifty-inch screen.
Understood. So, in my previous town I worked for, they actually had the ability to turn over control to individual monitors. I would recommend we don't go that way, 'cause we would have a rogue council member who's the mayor and was a lawyer and was really good at presenting stuff. And was constantly asking for, you know, flip it over. And he's the mayor, so you had to say yes. So, you'd flip it over and they would just kinda take over the presentation. So, that is, that would be our recommendation, that they would just be monitors that we'd get. Uh, Ryan has looked on Amazon, and then he also went down to talk to ATAC as well, uh, since they purchase stuff or supply, you know, this kind of, you know, equipment. But I needed to get a feel from this council before we went too far down this rabbit hole. If this is something you want us to figure out.
I would be for that.
Yeah. The reason I, the only reason I asked is, like, if they're little and they're down here. And the reason I don't bring my laptop is 'cause it's like this big.
Yeah.
So, we would be blocking it anyway. That's why I was asking, like, is it something I can, like, yeah, but.
So, it's going to be a monitor that will be duplicative of this, from what I believe. It's also going to be on a stand, so you'll be able to move it to the side, is what we're thinking. And I'm getting the head shaking, I heard a couple, you know, council members, Zeder said he's in favor of it, so.
I, I really like it. I, yeah, with being on planning commission, um, there's a lot that we're looking at the screen and, you know, with going through things, it would be very helpful, be helpful for this, too. 'Cause I can't always see that far away.
And we, we will look at getting, we will look at getting bigger monitors than what we were looking at before. Ryan, I will, we'll spend some time diving into this. That takes us to the next thing. City provided laptops, Chromebooks, iPads, Samsung pads, whatever. Bill, is that your own?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Tracy, do you still have a Chromebook from us? That's your ThinkPad. You've never had one, right?
I had one and I returned it, I didn't, yeah.
So, historically, the city would provide a piece of hardware that you would use for web and email, and only web and email. I mean, some people would download other stuff, but that's all they got it for. And then probably three or four years ago, maybe five years ago, newer council members are like, oh, no, I have my own iPad. They're comfortable using their own thing. They didn't want a Chromebook. Where before, we would issue a Chromebook to new council members, and we just stopped that after probably two councils ago. Is that something council would like us to start back up? That's something we can do. I mean, we should provide you the tools you need to do your job as council members.
I don't need that.
I think it's, I think the city should be prepared to offer that.
I don't need one.
I think it's a need, as needed basis.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but if somebody needs one, then.
So, that's perfect. So, if someone needs one, just let Michaela know. She's the city clerk, and we will get you, you know, the basic thing, just so you have your email and your packet. Some people carry their own, there's some people that live off a phone, which says, my eyes are getting worse, is becoming harder and harder to do. But we can go that way for that. But I wanted to bring that up just to make sure, since there's four new council members, we're not stepping on someone's toes or, I wanna make sure you have the tools in front of you to do your job. Any other questions about the technology stuff?
Anyone? No, I'm seeing a lot of no's, so I think we're good.
All right.
Okay, uh, agenda item number seven is review of council agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the agenda?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
You should have received at your desk a hard copy of the final Second Amendment to the real estate purchase and development agreement. As I mentioned in my report, the developer and their attorney were looking at things. What you see in here are the red lines that Nick Curcio, our city attorney, and I have agreed to with our developer. On page one, one B, that is, the first thing is correcting grammatical error where the developer shall notify the city in writing of its intention to do so. That's if it's gonna sell the property. I used to say the city would notify the developer, and that just didn't make sense 'cause the city isn't the one selling, it's the developer. And then under that, the city shall have thirty days to review the qualifications of the new purchaser. And if we are not satisfied with the new purchaser, if we are not satisfied that the new purchaser can deliver a project that is beneficial to the city, the city may exercise a right to repurchase it. So, that's that First Rights of Refusal language that council asked for. The Pocket Park Lease Agreement. I tried to get the developer to pay the city to mow that land. Uh, the developer reminded me that they're paying about four thousand dollars a year in taxes on that property, that they allowed the city to use that property for staging for our downtown construction and the roundabout for the last two years, where if we didn't have that, we've not been able to stage all of our equipment and material. And since we're using it for a park during this timeframe, he thinks it's okay if we just mow it. And to be honest, I'm in agreement with him. We're already gonna be mowing it at general area, so, we're taking away the five hundred dollars annual, uh, monthly payment to us to maintain it, is a recommendation of us. And then the last document is this modification of property use covenant that gets recorded. And this just deals with that First Right to Refusal, where we delete the whole paragraph and then we just add in the part that says, if he's gonna sell it, he has to notify us to sell it. And then we have thirty days to review the potential purchaser. And if we don't like who they're gonna sell it to, then we can turn around and buy it for ten thousand dollars. We sold that property for ten thousand dollars back in 2019 when we started this process. So, we're keeping that dollar figure constant.
I didn't see, I might, may have missed it. Where does it have any, uh, talk about reporting?
One moment. That's in the current agreement right now.
That's right here under, no, right here, it's on.
D.
D, yep.
Following the closing, developers shall provide, so that we just, we continue that language over.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for asking. Please do that, because sometimes things slip my brain.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else from staff?
This is why I am not a big fan of study sessions, because sometimes we put three things on there and it takes an hour and a half to discuss it. Sometimes we put three things on here, and it takes thirty minutes to discuss it. Yeah, we have a few seconds. We will share with you that Michaela and I are kicking around the idea of seeing if this council wants to amend their starting time to six PM, right? And do away with the study session. And if there is an item that we need to discuss, we'll just put it under the city manager and clerk section of the agenda, and we'll have that discussion. What we have found out, like, tonight, is sometimes our study sessions are short and sweet, even though we have an hour and a half set aside for it. And then we have found out that our regular meetings also can be short and sweet. I don't think this in any way curtails your discussion. You can talk as long as you want and keep a meeting going as long as you want. And, you know, having conversations over stuff. Uh, what this does do is it makes it a little bit easier for planning of a council meeting. Gives you a little bit longer of a time to get here for a meeting. So, you're not rushing, you know, right out of work to get here. And then we're done at, you know, seven o'clock sometimes, if we start at six.
And I, when I, my first term on council, uh, the study session did not start till six. Uh, and so that, something that, in my mind, I've been thinking about, you know, talking to the rest of council about, do we wanna take that back till six? And then, um, like Joel said, I mean, the meeting is for us to, to discuss. You don't have to make a decision in every council meeting. It's to talk about things for future meetings that we do wanna make a decision on. But that's my personal opinion. And starting a meeting at six, and if it does go long, we're not here till nine-thirty, ten o'clock, 'cause I have done some of those, so.
I like the idea. My question is, though, for example, last summer when we do the food truck rallies, like, on Mondays, would we push it back for that? 'Cause wasn't the planning session discontinued for a few months?
Yeah, so, in the, during the summertime, the food truck, the second meeting of each month, the study session was canceled, so the regular meeting started at seven. I would offer that the food trucks show up downtown at five o'clock. So, you would have, you know, fifty-five minutes to grab a bite to eat if you wanna support it those two days, um, 'cause you only eat the second and fourth Monday. And then if we start at six and we're done at seven fifteen, 'cause it's a short meeting, they're there till eight. So, I would recommend that we just keep our meeting at the same time. And we wouldn't push it back or anything for those, would be my recommendation. Unless council feels different, and then we can adjust.
Bill, what do you feel? You've only known a five-thirty study session.
With the five-thirty study session, it was very difficult for me to get here. I got out of work at five-thirty, so I closed the store down at five-thirty. I had to close it down early. So, I don't have any problems starting it later. Joel was talking about canceling it totally and putting it in the mayor of the thing at the end of our normal meeting. I don't like that idea either, because we have presentations of people, then they have to wait here all the time and then do that at the last minute.
So.
A later start time for the.
You're talking about it down here, Joel, under thirteen.
Yeah, so, I'm talking about very under eleven F.
Eleven F, oh.
If there are things we need to talk to people about, talk to council about. For example, tonight would have been a really good one. So, we wanna talk about the local purchasing policy. That would have been under the finance department, just a discussion under that. The rules and procedures would be under the city manager and clerk, and the technology needs would be under the city manager and clerk. The presentation aspect, when people come in to present, is number ten. That's at the very beginning.
Uh, number six, isn't it?
Well, number six is special presentations and recognition by mayor or council. Number ten is written petitions and reports from special committees.
Okay.
So, it's a written petition. So, whenever someone wants to come ask city council, can we have the Griswold for free? They're at the beginning of the meeting. So, so they would still be at the front of the meeting. This extra stuff would be at the bottom.
Changing where they're going to be showing up at.
Changing what?
Well, like Siegfried and Freudin last week, they were, it wasn't Siegfried, what's the name of their group?
Yeah, Siegfried and Crandall, gotcha, yeah.
It's like, what?
That would have gone where?
That would have gone up here in the special presentations, number six.
So, you're moving it from there and putting it into our normal agenda?
Yeah, that'd be a special presentation.
Okay.
And we can go ahead.
Yeah, 'cause then it's not at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, and so what we can get, what we can do is, we will work on, 'cause the agenda falls under the rules and procedures. We will show how that fits into the rules and procedures with that agenda. And you guys can massage it and, you know, have that conversation, you know, at your upcoming study session.
At our next meeting, can we, whatever's in the study session? At our next meeting, can we, whatever's in the study session, can you reference at that time during the study session where it would have...
Yeah.
I mean, I know you've done that a little bit tonight, but I think if we could see it some more...
We can do that very easily.
Okay.
Do we know how we evolved into the study session and the regular?
So when I came here in 2017...
You can blame Joel.
Yes, you very much can blame him. Prior to me arriving here, the city council had three or four city council subcommittees. Three people got together to talk about finance, three people got together to talk about police, three people got together to talk about capital improvements, three people got together to talk about budget, even though budget's part of finance, and HR. They would vote in their subcommittee. It would show up on the agenda as a recommendation, and it was the immediate vote. There was no discussion. So that city council that hired me, their first action was get rid of the subcommittees now, because everything was done behind closed doors with no real dialogue. We had one council member who was recording the council meetings, not telling people they were recording the council meetings. When it was brought up that they were recording the council meetings, they were advised by their city attorney that you actually have to put a sticker on your front saying, "I am recording the council meetings," and that went on their laptop, and, you know, it is what it is. I said, "Hey, we could do a pre-session," and that's why it's called at first, "and we'll just meet before the regular meeting and go over everything people are discussing." And that's kind of how it, that's how it started. And it worked good to address that initial concern of those subcommittees meeting but not really talking to each other. There's some, you know, alliances that were formed and stuff like that, and we were trying to get away from that. You're one council, not one of you can tell me what to do, four of you can, but so we're trying to, you know, build a better, you know, unity of one here. And then there's some things that you just need to talk about. There's no action. You just need to say, "Hey, how do you guys feel about this as a group in front of the public that's being recorded? Windows wide open, so when people walk by, they know, hey, there's a meeting going on in there. I wonder what they're doing." Doors are open, so people feel welcomed in here. When we have a packed house, the lobby has speakers, and we turn the speakers on so people can hear the conversation that happens. But yeah, well, that was, that was the evolution of how this started, and now we're at a point where sometimes we're scratching our heads what to put on that study session. And I'm like, son of a gun, we have to, like, come up with a report now, because we can't just say, "Let's talk about, you know, should the road be blue or yellow?" We got to tell them why and give them some basis of information that so it can be a foundation for your conversation. And we think if we go into, let's just have two meetings a month, start at six o'clock, and if there's a special thing we need to talk about, we'll just plug it into the agenda. It won't be at the beginning, it will fall under the appropriate department. And if there's a really hot topic issue, you know, Tracy and Bill have been on council before, we call special meetings sometimes. We say, in not closed sessions, but sometimes we say, "We're going to have a special meeting to discuss this," because it's the only, because we have to wrap our arms around it, and it's complicated. So we'll still hold that ability to just call people in under the Open Meetings Act, which is an eighteen-hour notification kind of a thing. How do other people feel about this before we go too deep into this rabbit hole?
I mean, it looks like, yeah, everything that we discussed today could have been easily threaded in. Are you allowed to, like, make an asterisk, like, this is something that needs to be voted on and...
Yeah.
Yeah, like, so we would have a good idea, like, you know, do we need to vote?
So a lot of cities that I've seen, their agendas, they have things that say, like, action, no action, right next to it, so council members know there's an action on this item or no action, they'll receive, you know, receive for information. And if we aren't doing a good job with it, let us know. But in our staff reports, it should always say, it's, you know, it's requested that city council discuss their technological needs, or it should say, "It's requested that city council approve," or approve it, the action, you know. Discussion's in action too, but, you know, we need, you know, we need to approve something. And most, all of our reports should state, say stuff like that. But we can, we can address that in the study session, I mean, in the agenda stuff as well.
Yeah, I think there was a time and a place when we started this study session, and things have evolved. And I appreciate both of you bringing this up. It was something that I've been tossing about myself.
Yeah, I think it sounds more efficient.
Yeah, and I know too, you know, we've had the public come, and it's been kind of confusing for them. They're not quite sure, oh, what's going on, and they, you know, what is...
They think it's a rubber stamp.
Yeah, you know, what is this? And I think if it's just all part of one meeting, and this is the council meeting.
And, you know, kind of what Bill was saying about, you know, where would they fall in this thing, we've had public, members of the public show up at five-thirty for a public hearing that doesn't start till seven.
Correct.
And they're like, "When do I get to speak?"
Yeah.
And we're like, "What are you here for? Oh, that's at the seven o'clock meeting." And they're like, "Isn't it just one meeting?" You know? So I think if we do combine them, it will make it clearer for the residents to see how this comes together.
Now that you explained where that would go, I would have no problem with it starting earlier. I'm always happy to get home earlier with my family.
And I would say on my city, my city manager listserv, it was not exactly like this, but they were, one city was looking at moving its meetings from six to five, and asked how many have done that. And a lot of them responded, they've moved them, you know, all up, like, six seems to be the common start time now. So mostly for what you just said, Bill, they're getting out of there by, you know, eight o'clock, which is, you know, good for them. So...
Okay.
That's all we have.
Okay. Anything else from council?
When are they going to start the tree trimming or knocking down the marked trees?
I will look at my email, and I'll get an answer for you. It just came up like a hot minute ago to me.
Yeah, that was on my list that Public Spaces actually wanted to know that, too.
Stacy from Swansea indicated they plan to start cutting trees the week of twelve twenty-three. She was not sure if the crew would start on the street trees or the water plant first. So twelve twenty-three is today.
Didn't hear any chainsaws running.
I didn't either. Maybe they're at the water plant. All right. Anything else before we adjourn? No? Okay, we will adjourn the study session at six twenty-one.
Seven PM, I'm going to call the City of Alleghen regular council meeting to order. Michaela, could I have you do roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Canales. Councilmember Hooker.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Westover.
Here.
Councilmember Zeter.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Morgan.
Present.
And Mayor Paragom.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. All right, could I get everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving down to agenda item four. Four A is approval of the regular council meeting agenda for December 23rd, 2024. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, can I get a second?
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Moving down to five, approval of minutes. We've got five A. Approval of the study session meeting minutes from the December 9th, 2024 council meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the study session minutes from December 9th, 2024.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Five B is approval of the regular meeting minutes from the December 9th, 2024 council meeting. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion we approve the December 9th regular meeting minutes.
Now support it. All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, we're gonna skip all the way down to 11 A is reports from boards, commissions, and city offices. We've got the develop, 11 A1 is the downtown. Yeah, sorry.
Point of order, you skipped number nine.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, public comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just was like moving right along here. All right, excuse me, my error. Gonna go back to agenda item number nine is public comment. If anyone has any public comment from the audience, please approach the podium, state your name, address, and you have three minutes. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none. All right, I'm gonna move down to 11. Reports from boards, commissions, and city offices. We have 11 A1 is the Downtown Development Authority, the December meeting, and that is me. There were, I'm trying to think of, seems like a lot of discussion amongst the DDA about the downtown decorations, getting feedback from the members of that commission. Everybody was in agreement that they really liked the seasonal decorations. They liked when you came downtown, you really felt like you were entering downtown. It was very impactful. I know that some of the costs were shared, but it was something that was budgeted. So I think next year, to me, it sounds like that's the direction we want to go with this look. And we'll go from there with what it looks like for years to come. Then we talked about the speakers. Those are all installed. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to enjoy those. There were some negatives about it that with some of the businesses downtown, that it was very loud if they had a speaker in front of their business. But the city staff is looking at some directional options to help deter and face the, get the sound to project differently. The other item was Lot 1, which is the lot behind here, which people call Behind Pizza Hut, but trying to get used to calling that Lot 1. Talking about upcoming plans for this next year with that lot reconstruction and the 15-minute parking spots, designated parking spots. And I think we landed on three, is that correct, Parker?
The motion was no more than.
No more than three. And really, oh, the last one was the match on May for 2025. That would be opening up in January for, and I don't know all the specifics, but MEDC runs it, and it is for designated, like, business owners and their building. They can apply for that. Did I miss anything?
You cover it.
Okay, all right. We'll move to 11 A2, which is Public Spaces Commission, the December meeting. And Councilmember Canales.
Councilmember Canales was absent at that meeting, so I'll go ahead and take that.
Okay. Okay, all right.
So we met on December 11th. The group talked about the potential for the installation of cameras at some of our city parks. The city has a camera system currently downtown that was installed as part of the new streetscape project. And then we've had a set of cameras along the riverfront for a number of years now in that area, and that's helped with not only deterrent, but when we do have issues in these areas, we're able to review footage and help follow up on those issues. So the discussion regarding cameras in our park system is a result of some recent issues of vandalism, illegal dumping, things of that nature. So the board was supportive of looking at the installation of cameras at the sports complex, JCPark, and Oakwood Cemetery, kind of in that order of priority for them. We also discussed, there's a subcommittee of the Public Spaces Commission that has been formed. They've yet to meet, but we kind of established sometime at the end of January for that subcommittee of three to meet, to interview, if you will, potential arborists, which was a discussion that was had at this level, too. So they'll kind of go over that. What they're interested in specifically is an inventory of the trees at Oakwood Cemetery. So they want to start moving forward with that process. That was about it.
All right. Moving down to 11 A3 is the Alleghen Fire District December meeting, and that would be Councilmember Walker.
I, I gotta, I was taking in a lot of information, and it'll take me a few meetings to.
It's all a big pack, yes.
But it was a great, great meeting. Couple of things that stood out. The incident, fire incidents that they had, 54 in the month of October compared to 26 the year before. But, well, no, no, that's okay. That's, yeah, 54 this year, 26 last year. There was discussion on what types, they have a lot of, lot of data, a lot of information, good breakdown, man hours involved, everything, everything involved. So that, that was, that was great. November, only 24 incidents versus 34 the year before. And of course, well, with that type, a lot less man hours involved as well. A lot of financial discussion going through the reimbursing, cost recovery. That was news to me, how, what doesn't get covered by, if there's a crash and there's cleanup, if, just as an example, if staff goes to clean it up, if that's not covered by insurance. Some places, I know Hamilton, they, they do charge the people involved or whoever's involved. But the Alleghen Fire District does not do that, so. And they, they want to keep it that way, but that's by design, that's a decision. There's good discussion on that, then they showed me the tour. Yeah, that's one thing that would, yeah. Yeah. That's, there's a lot more, I'm sorry, but that's, that's what I have right now.
All right, thank you.
That was more of an update than any council's ever gotten since I've been on council, so that is really good.
Yes, it was good. I appreciate it. 11 A4 is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority meets as needed, and they did meet in December.
Yeah, so just very quickly, they approved their policies and procedures, and they're recommending that city council also adopt them, which is later on on your agenda. They adopted a resolution establishing a brownfield revolving fund. So when they do set up these brownfields, this will allow them and city council to collect some of that TIF to go into a revolving fund that then can be used by the city on other brownfield activities. And then the final one was they approved the project application, and we have received our first project application for the residential development at 500 Delano Street, that 42-unit, single-family development. So they are hitting the ground and running.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving down, our agenda is 11 B, the Finance Department. We have 11 B1, the request to approve accounts payable and payroll, and that would be Mayor Pro Tem Morgan.
Okay, accounts payable of $330,197.13, a payroll of $126,670.87, for total disbursement of $456,868.0 cents. Motion to pass.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. All right, I'm gonna move down to agenda item 11 E, which is Public Works. 11 E1 is a request to approve a purchase order for Porter Corporation for a 28-foot amphitheater for Mahan Park in the amount of $32,270.97.
Thank you, Mayor. As council is well aware, they're planning on doing a major improvement to Mahan Park this upcoming year. As part of that improvement, we're gonna be replacing the gazebo with a structure that's more appropriate for the performances that take place there. The structure you see on the screen is a structure that was chosen, you know, by the citizen committee that was comprised of people who led the fundraising, people that were, represents good times at the gazebo, people that represent bands that actually play in the gazebo, and then people who perform live theater in the gazebo as well. The company is called Porter. The actual structure is a play corps structure. They're out of Holland, Michigan. This is a structure that was in the original bid documents and specifications to go out, but this is something that the city has the capability to purchase separately. If we'd have kept it in the bid document and had the lowest bidder purchase this, they'd have put their own markup on this price, as well as have to pay the sales tax, which would have been just passed on to us. So we've saved, you know, several thousand dollars by having the city just purchase this. It'll be delivered to the site, and then the general contract that we see that wins the bid will install this. Any questions on this purchase order?
Okay, I don't see any question. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase order?
I make a motion that we approve the purchase order of $32,270.
Okay, we got, did you get that, Michaela? Okay.
We had doing.
I know it. It's been moved and supported. Is there any other discussion amongst council? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. All right, 11 E2. All right, eleven E two is a request to declare the city's snowmobile and cross-country ski trail groomer as surplus items to be sold.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a machine that the city purchased back in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we purchased this in this cross-country ski groomer, which you do not see in the picture, for eight hundred dollars. Um, just due to our reduction in winters, as well as, you know, higher priorities over at the DPW, we haven't been able to really, you know, groom a trail at the complex like we did the first couple of years. Uh, we are recommending that you declare the surplus and allow us to sell it. Uh, the way we sell equipment is we usually go through Medema auctions just north of here. They, you know, auction it for us, we tell them the price we want, and that's what we get when they auction it. We've done this multiple times for pieces of equipment that we declare surplus once they're past their useful life for the city.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we declare the city's snowmobile and cross-country ski trail groomer as surplus.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion on this motion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Moving down to eleven F, City Manager and City Clerk. Eleven F one is a request to approve the Second Amendment to the Real Estate Purchase Agreement between the City of Alleghan and one oh two Brady LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as we've discussed the past two meetings, uh, we're recommending that we approve the Second Amendment to our real estate purchase and development agreement for one oh one Brady Street, that is the vacant lot next to the Second Street Bridge. We are still working with one oh two Brady LLC to develop that lot as a hotel. It's just taking some time. Uh, the reason we need to make these amendments is our current amendment has a twenty-five thousand dollar liquidated damage payment that the developer would have to pay to the city. Uh, we don't feel that is necessary. Um, we are adding, uh, certain conditions to this. One is that if the developer decides to sell this property, they have thirty, the city will have thirty days to review the potential purchaser, and if we don't feel that that potential purchaser is the correct purchaser, we can repurchase this property for ten thousand, so there is an opportunity for us to reacquire this property. If they try to sell it, uh, we will continue this discussion for the next three years to twenty twenty-seven, where they would give us quarterly reports. And then during that time, the city can use and maintain that property as we see fit. So more or less, it's gonna go back to a green space for the time being, as we work to find a hotelier to develop this property. Property. Any questions?
All right, uh, can I get a motion? Nobody wants to make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Real Estate Purchase Agreement.
I'll support it.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Is there any, uh, further discussion amongst council? Any questions? All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Eleven F two is a request to approve the proposed Brownfield Redevelopment Authority policies and procedures. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed in the update from the B R A minutes, um, this is the item that they would like council also to adopt. These are the policies and procedures that are gonna guide our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. As stated in the staff report, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is a semi-autonomous, uh, committee. Their powers are rooted in the state law, and they operate under the state law. City council's oversight of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority comes from that you are the final say on all brownfield tax increment financing plans. So when a person applies for a tax increment financing, the B R A reviews the plan, goes through all the numbers, and then they approve it and make a recommendation to City Council to approve it. So you do have the final say on actually approving, you know, what kind of financing plans, you know, are established in the city and ones that are not. This document sets forth the guardrails for the authority to operate within. So you've had a chance to review this, um, since it's been in the staff report, but, you know, section one just talks about the purpose. Section two is titled Policies. That talks about which properties are authorized. They have to be authorized under Act three eighty-one, which is the State of Michigan Act, and then it talks about what eligible activities are. This includes baseline environmental assessments, due care activities, um, additional response activities, so if they have to dig deep into the soil and remove contaminated soil kind of things. Reasonable costs for preparing a brownfield plan, so this is the money that you pay to an accountant and to engineers to, you know, do the research and type up that work. Uh, demolition, lead and asbestos assessment in the basement, administrative fees, which is fees to the city to pay us for overseeing the plan work. Uh, capture of the local brownfield revolving loan fund. Uh, reasonable cost of environmental insurance, infrastructure improvements, and site preparation. Uh, housing development ones are infrastructure, site prep, reimbursement provided to owners of rental housing units for qualified rehabilitation. Earlier, there was a conversation about Alice households, which are asset limited, income constrained, but they're employed. So it's households where they have very little assets, they have very little income, but they're employed. So they kind of fall through the cracks of all the social networks that we have set up. This, uh, housing development project is, uh, housing development portion of the B R A has some set limits on what a developer could, you know, rent a property to if they're gonna qualify for that. So that's been taken into consideration. Cost and demolition of existing buildings, temporary household relocation costs. So if they're gonna rehab an entire building, and there's only one unit out of twenty that are occupied right now, they could, you know, use the money to relocate those people. Uh, acquisition for blighted obsolete rental units, um, we don't have those in Alleghan right now, but there are larger cities that have, uh, dilapidated apartment complexes from the fifties, and this would be allowed for that kind of thing. And then reimbursement provided to developer to fill a financing gap associated with the development of housing units, price or income qualified households. Those are also commonly known as, you know, Alice households. And then we, in, interest costs, so sometimes you'll get a plan where they say, hey, I have to go borrow, you know, two million dollars to do it at four percent interest. I would like to be reimbursed for my interest. Those will only be reviewed on a case-by-case study to make sure that it's financially feasible, for lack of a better word, that, you know, they, they actually do need that interest, you know, covered. And then, uh, applicant is responsible for keeping detailed records of all eligible expenses and turn them into the city. When requesting incentives, they can't just say, hey, I spent ten, you know, a million dollars on this project. We have to go through and check all the boxes and make sure everything lines up. It's a very detailed process. Qualifications for incentives is section two point three. We just go through, we make sure that, you know, it's an eligible property, it's defined by Act three eighty-one. We ensure that the property is in the brownfield plan and use of TIF to support the proposed brownfield project. And then the proposed redevelopment for the eligible property is consistent with the master plan zoning ordinance and stuff like that. Again, these are all just the policies that kind of just, you know, dictate us or, you know, the guardrails that we operate within. We do have a process for local-only qualification, so when you set up a TIF district, you have, you're capturing the taxes. There are times when you're only gonna capture local taxes. They're not gonna apply to capture the eighteen mils that the school education taxes. I think it's called the school education tax, the extra eighteen mils. They're not eligible for that, so it's just the local, this section, you know, sets forth those policies for us to work within. Then we talk about what are eligible activities prior to the approval. Things that they can collect that before they get the approval, because it does, like, creating the plan itself. You do that before that gets approved, so if it gets approved, we can go back and reimburse them for that. Administration costs are in here. We are capping our administration fund at ten percent of the annual TIF capture, so if it, you know, it's five thousand dollars of taxes that year of growth, we take ten percent, five hundred goes into our accounts instead of reimbursing that applicant. Any questions?
The ten percent you just said, is that standard?
Yeah, yeah, typically, it's anywhere, it's either five or ten. We're going with ten.
And then what was in place before?
Nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, the city hasn't had a brownfield plan since the Perrigo Outlet story.
All right, is there any other questions? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed Brownfield Redevelopment Authority policy and procedures?
I make a motion to approve the Brownfield procedures, policy procedures.
I'll support it.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? No? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. All right, we're gonna move down to twelve, which is Board Appointments. We've got two tonight. Uh, twelve A is an appointment of Lacey Schmidt to the Downtown Development Authority to a term set to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. And I don't know if anybody wants, if, if there's anything that staff wants to talk about with Lacey's. I think you all read her application. I think she's, I mean, a great business owner, um, in the city. It would be a good addition. Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion that we appoint Lacey Schmidt to the Downtown Development Authority.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, twelve B is appointment of Richard Lewis to the Planning Commission to a term set to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. And you all had the application in your packet. Any, Parker?
I was just gonna say, Richard is also in the audience tonight.
I was gonna say, he's been here, a familiar face, yep. Any, uh, discussion? All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve Mr. Lewis to the Planning Commission.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. All right, I'm gonna move down to thirteen. Agenda item thirteen is communications from City Manager, Council, and Mayor. Joel?
Hope you guys all have a Merry Christmas and a happy end of the year.
Uh, just, I know the last time we met was just after the first week of Fester Fridays, so I just wanted to let, cue you in on how the subsequent two weeks went. Um, Art Hop was a huge success. Um, it was packed downtown. It was very, very cold. I was driving the trolley, and so there was like nobody on the sidewalks, but there was no place to park, and everybody was crowded inside the stores, visiting with the artists and, uh, dining at the restaurants, so it was really great to see it packed downtown that Friday. Um, the library had, uh, they hosted Santa Claus, uh, for the free visits there, and then they have live reindeer out in front, and they do a really good job of keeping track of the number of people that come through the library to visit Santa. And they were nearing a thousand people that came in to the library that night, so that was really great. Um, and then, uh, this past Friday, the last Friday was, uh, the Home for the Holidays event, um, with a focus on our downtown eateries and drinkeries, and then, uh, we added food trucks. Um, chatted with some of the food trucks, and they were all very happy, and they, uh, one of them told me they can't name another place where they can come park downtown for three hours and make the money that they do other than in Alleghan, whether it's in the middle of December or in the middle of July. So they love coming here. Um, and then, uh, next week, a week from, uh, tomorrow, is our New Year's Eve celebration, uh, from eight to midnight. Hopefully, if you're able, you can come and at least swing through, if not stay, for the culmination of the ball drop at the end of the night. Um, in addition to the food trucks, the live music, uh, and the silent disco that we've been doing for the past few years, we are adding an ice skating rink this year. Um, it's free to the public to use. Um, there will be ice skates there that, uh, they can slip on and get out on a synthetic ice rink that will be set up, or they can bring their own skates. And then folks who might not be totally comfortable with it, we've got the little walkers that, uh, people can use for some support out there and get out and have some fun, too. And then, of course, it all culminates at midnight with the ball drop, so looking forward to it.
Yeah, thanks, Parker. Michaela?
I just wish everybody a happy holidays.
Thank you. All right, we'll start on this end. Mike?
Um, I got two things. There, um, this is for Joel. I don't really know how to handle this, but there's a, a homeless gentleman on the island set up out past the gate. And it's cold out there. It's city property.
Half, half the island's city property, and half the island is Leslie Dixon. Do you know which side of the river?
It's on the city side.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll let our police know.
Okay. Then, um, secondly, I want to wish the men and women of the police force, fire department, the city hall, uh, Merry Christmas and a happy holiday.
Thank you. Patrick?
Yeah, happy holidays. That's it.
Same, happy holidays if you travel. Hope everyone is safe. And for those unfortunately, um, out in the cold, unhoused, um, yeah, I don't have an answer. I wish I did.
Carl?
I agree with that.
Yeah, um, I just want to thank you all for, um, helping us newbies along, and I, um, want to wish you all a happy holidays and Happy New Year, and yeah, I hope to see you all on New Year's Eve.
Merry Christmas to all. Peace, goodwill.
And I forgot to turn that on. It is wonderful to see, hear the music downtown, Parker. Thank you so very, very much. And like I said, Merry Christmas to all the city staff, to all the members of the council. That's it.
Okay, um, just from me is Merry Christmas and a peaceful twenty twenty-five for everyone. All right, and we will adjourn at seven thirty-one. Thank you.